...on May 24th at 6:00 PM. Before we get started, I would like to see if we could just have a few seconds of silence for the recent thing that just happened in Texas so we can remember those, their families in need. Will you join with me in silence? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance as well of those -- there's nobody watching, so those in attendance. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independent City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within the city. We also consider and make decisions on plaques, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. Our procedure is as follows. First, the applicant will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case, followed by anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak in favor. Second, those who are of opposition, who have questions regarding the case, will be recognized to speak. Then, if there's opposition or questions from the public, the applicant will be allowed a rebuttal period. At this point, the commissioners will have the opportunity -- the case will be closed and the commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions and discuss with ourselves. And finally, the commission will render the decision on the case. So because of this, the only public hearing of the cases on the agenda tonight, all those who wish to speak will be heard. All comments and questions should be addressed to the chair, not directly to the applicant or staff. The chair also requests that statements be kept brief and on point, and that if the statement has already been made by a previous speaker, please do not repeat it and simply indicate your agreement on the matter. So before we get started, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're ready to swear. Anybody in that would like to or thinks they might like to speak tonight?
Can you say what you'd like?
It's on.
It's on.
There you go. Better? I know I'm a soft speaker. My kids don't think so, but I do. Okay. So anyone who would like to testify or think they might, could you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. The first thing we have on our agenda is the consent agenda. Actually, let's do roll call real quick. I'm sorry. We'll do roll call.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Preston?
Here.
Commissioner Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Chairman McLean?
Here. Now we'll do the consent agenda. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Have you had a chance to look at the minutes?
The minutes appear to be in good order, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
So moved that the minutes are accepted.
I second.
Commissioner Wiley, seconded. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We have a case withdrawn, which was a continued case on Hayden Street. That was case 22-124 -- 24-04. We have three cases that are going to be continued. Can we vote on them together?
Yes.
Okay. So the cases to be continued are case 22-100-05, case 22-100-06, and case 22-200-07. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of the cases to be withdrawn and subject cases to be continued, I move that we move forward as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. The continued cases have passed. Okay. Next, first public hearing is case 22-100-07, rezoning of 1311 East US 24 Highway. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yes, this is an application of Samuel Dyer to rezone a piece of property on 24 Highway. It's just west of Lee Semen Road and east of Nolan Road. You can see the location there on the screen. It's south of 24 Highway. This is the zoning of the property. Currently, it's -- the north half is on C2 and the southern half R6. This is part of the strip commercial zoning that was done probably four years ago by the city. He seeks to rezone that entire tract to C3 so he can lease it to a company to do contracting, contracting business. This comprehensive plan does recommend residential uses for this property. This is an aerial of the site. You can see it's the southern portion of the site, probably half to 50, 60 percent is really undeveloped, just a green area and trees. And the parking lot and the building are on the north half of the site, just off of 24 Highway. There are commercial properties to the north, excuse me, to the east and west, and I believe there's actually a house on the southern portion of the lot that's next to this. This is the property, as you can see, from 24 Highway. It's a rectangular building with a number of garage bays on both sides of the building, surrounded by a parking lot, excuse me, driveway parking lot. There's some equipment stored on the premises now. This is the east side of the building. Again, you can see it's enclosed by a fence line and has a number of garages on the east side of the building. This is the west side of the building. It's basically similar or identical to the east side of the building. I think this was an auto repair, among other types of services, in years gone by. And the parking lot, the drive parking area, goes just a little bit beyond that southern edge of the building, off in the distance there. This is the property on the west side of the site. I think this front piece is a commercial building that's, I'm guessing, is now vacant. There's a house off in the distance, as you can see from the aerial diagram, in the aerial photo earlier. This is another commercial business that's just west of this, west of the previous slide. It's an office building. I'm not sure what it's used for now. Here, we're looking west down US 24 Highway. You're familiar with this location, has used car lots here and auto service down and then some offices, that sort of thing. This is the property across the street. That green awning building there on the left has been used for several things in the last 10, 20 years, bookstore, things like that. That's a house. I think that's still used as a house. That is owned commercial. And this here, we're looking east up US 24 Highway. Again, there's a church off in the distance. I believe there's a used car lot off in the distance as well, and used auto sales and that sort of thing on the left side of the screen, further down. And this is a C store that's to the east of the site. It's been there a number of years as well. Staff does recommend approval of this property. You can see from the diagram what the zoning looks like now. It is -- it contains about an acre and a quarter or so. Not much really to say other than that. Everything's pretty self-evident, straightforward.
Thank you. Will the applicant come up?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Bill Moore. I'm an attorney with Rouse Frentz White Goss Gentile &amp; Roads located in Kansas City, Missouri. I am here representing Mr. Dyer, who is the applicant in this case. I really don't have a whole lot more to add to what Mr. Borders pointed out in the staff report. I think he did a very good job of explaining exactly why we're here. And the reason we're here is the underlying use of the property would normally be compatible with the C2 zoning, but because of the outdoor storage, it requires that uptick to a C3. That's the sole reason that we're requesting it. Also, you might have some question as to why they are -- we are requesting that the entire site be rezoned as opposed to just the front 200 feet. That's because the city requires when now, in the current zoning regulations, if you are rezoning a property, the entirety of the lot must be included in the rezoning application. As you could see from the slides that were -- you were shown, the back portion of that property isn't used now and hasn't been used in the past and will most likely not be used in the future for this particular use. We just really need to get the front portion, the 200 feet, secured for the C3 so that Mr. Dyer's tenants can continue to operate there. At this point, unless you have any questions for me, I would like to ask Mr. Dyer to come up and explain a little bit about what he had been doing with the property and also the reason why we're making this request. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Please state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Sam Dyer. I live at 1622 Highland Drive, Independence. I've lived here almost all my life except for two years. I bought that property in 1995 and have had it, what, 27 years? I ran my business out of there and then I now have retired. And I have a renter who also is interested in buying it, but it will not be any good to him if it's not zoned C3 because he has equipment that cannot be part -- that used to be a car wash, and I converted it into run my business out of there. And so that's why I'm requesting the C3 is so, A, he can rent, plus he wants to buy it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I do have questions I want to ask. Questions are going to be probably for staff also. I did drive by. I do not like the aspect of the trash sitting outside beyond the fence line. Is there a way we can get that moved inside? I don't know if doing rezoning, if we have to make it behind a structure like newer places or not.
I could -- we used to put it on the outside, I'm sorry, on the other side of the fence so the trash truck wouldn't have to go all the way back there. So yes, we could move it on.
I mean, because I mean, it looks, I mean, we needed the trash to the back of the lot. I don't like it sticking out front. That's one thing I did not like when I drove by. The chain link fence, I guess that's just for security reasons or nothing else?
Yeah, I've had that too, yeah.
Is that per code, the chain link fence being out so far next to the street?
Well, it wouldn't be now, but that chain link's been there a number of years.
Okay. I don't know what I remember seeing. I remember, I think you had a lawn service there for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, I ran my lawn business out there for 27 years.
Okay, yeah. I was just curious about the fence being out so far, if that was a...
Oh, well, the fence comes right with the building.
Right, I understand.
Right, okay.
But usually you gotta have a setback or something.
Yeah, I think it's 11 feet.
Okay.
It's 11 feet, but of course, the 24 Highway is going to be widening and...
Widening and putting sidewalks there, yes. So I don't know if that will come into any aspect of it.
Well, actually, if it's even with the building and, and I guess it is from this, that is legal to have that fence at that level, but this type of fencing along 24 Highway is not something that we'd allow now. It would have to be some sort of wrought iron or wood frame or something, not chain link.
Okay. Does that need to be upgraded if he plans on selling to somebody?
Well, if it was, it's been there for all these years, then no, we couldn't make him change it.
Grandfather did it.
But if it were destroyed, somebody ran down all of it, he would have to put it up in accordance with city standards now.
Okay. I mean, the biggest thing's gonna be the trash. I know they're gonna put equipment.
Yeah, we can put it on the other side.
Okay, then I know they're gonna store equipment out there, so, okay. That's my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions of commissioners? All right. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? All right, seeing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, do you have any other questions of staff or of the applicant? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Preston?
In the matter of case number 22-100-07 rezoning at 1311 East 24 Highway from R6 and C2 to C3, I move for approval with the stipulation that the trash bin is moved behind the fence.
You can't put conditions on rezoning.
No, you can't put the conditions on rezoning.
No. You can't put conditions.
It's not our job.
Okay. Withdraw the latter portion.
It's above our pay grade.
Shouldn't have even...
We'll attempt.
Well done. It's just a suggestion. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Ferguson? And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number 22-100-07 has passed. Okay. Next case is case 22-125-06 rezoning/HUD 316 West Sea Avenue. Staff report, please. Oh, sorry. I'm really talking fast tonight.
You're good.
I don't know. I missed my afternoon caffeine also.
Yes, this is an application by Seth Veld to rezone some property at 316 West Sea Avenue. As you look at the location map, it is between Pleasant and Main Street on C. C is actually a very short piece there. It has been zoned R6 for a number of years, and he seeks to rezone it to R30 PUD in order to renovate the four units that are now vacant in the building. The property is about quarter of an acre in size. Like I said, it's been zoned R6 for a number of years, and it's a one-building house that contains now four units. The applicant purchased the property in February of 2018. It was already zoned R6, as I mentioned. It's a 60 by 150-foot lot, contains a single building with a driveway on its eastern side accessing a concrete parking area in the rear of the site. The building itself contains over 3,500 square feet divided into four living units, two on the ground floor and two units above. And they're accessed by doors on the east side and then a stairway on the west side of the building. He was not known when the house itself was constructed, although our historic preservation manager said that it was in the folk Victorian style. This is a neighborhood that primarily consists of older single-family homes. A few of them have been converted into multi-unit structures years ago. There are several lots to the north that contain newer typical side-by-side duplex buildings. And, okay, this is our general location. Here, this is the zoning of the property. As you can see, it's the very light yellow is R6 Single Family Residential. The brown color that's north of this is zoned R30. This property, when it was rezoned in 2009, I believe, this is where we drew the line on what property should be rezoned as part of the city-initiated rezoning and which should be. Comprehensive plan recommends neighborhood residential uses for the site. This is an aerial photo, again, that shows the house there, the building in the middle of the site. There is concrete driveway on the east side of the building and then a parking area behind. This is the floor plans. The lower floor is on the left and the second floor is on the right. This is the front of the house. It was painted green, kind of a green-gray color fairly recently. You can see the parking, excuse me, the driveway there on the right side of the picture. This is the west side of the building. There's the stairway that goes up to the second floor to access some of the units on the second floor. This is the back of the building. We're looking south at the rear of the building and the parking area. And here, this is another picture, another view. We're looking to the northwest. There's the driveway that accesses the back of the property where the parking lot is. This is the house that's immediately east of the site. It's still in single-family residential, by my understanding. This is another house that's just east of that house. Again, another single-family home. This is the house across from the site, still in single-family use, and another house south of the site, which is across the street from this property. And this is the house that's immediately to the west of this site, and it appears to be still in single-family use. Here, we're looking west, up West Sea. You can see some of the homes along there are, you know, older homes, probably built in the '30s or '40s with the front porches on some of them. Here, we're looking east down West Sea. The applicant's property is to the left there. You can see some of the house types off in the distance. The staff does not recommend approval of this rezoning request and the accompanying preliminary development plan for this property. If the commission did decide to recommend approval of the R30 PUD zoning, staff recommends that the following conditions be included with the preliminary site plan consisting of the aerial photos of the site, of these conditions being, due to the size and configuration of the lot and site improvements, the number of the dwelling units shall not exceed four units, replace or install a privacy fence along the north property line. And that's the only two conditions that we had.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Question for staff. Was there ever any, given the size of this lot, was there ever any discussion of classification of R12 or lower?
No, the applicant wants to keep the four units, and he can't do that with R12, and he can't do that with R18 because of the size of the lot is so small, you have to go to the highest multifamily zoning district, which is the R30. Had the lot been larger, he may have gotten away with the R18, but with four units in the building, he could never go to R12.
The size of the lot is the reason staff does not recommend approval?
Well, that and it's a neighborhood where there's not a lot of these houses that I can tell. I mean, there's some houses in this neighborhood that were converted, but most of the homes seem to be still in single-family use. I don't know when the property was converted into multifamily, probably 20, 30 years ago. Who knows? We have no records, any recent records of any permits issued for the work. Not saying that they were never issued, but we have no records of that, so he does not know. I don't believe he knows when the property was converted either, but he can answer that when he comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come up and please state your full name and your address, please?
Hello. My name is Seth Veld, and my address is 130...
Speak up, please.
My address is 1304 South Wind Drive in Raymore, Missouri, 64083. I purchased the property in 2018. I purchased it thinking that it was a fourplex. The county has it zoned as a fourplex. It was four units when I purchased it. There is no connecting way to access the units without going outside of the property. I have, as it pertains specifically to the concerns in the staff report, I have no intentions of making anything larger than fourplex. I bought it with four units and assumed it, or intended to keep it as four units. The fence in the back has been damaged, but I have no issues replacing that. So I bought it with the intent of getting it up to code to be able to be rented as four units. When I purchased it, it was four units, but there was no grounding on the electrical outlets. So I went in and I went to make GF CI outlets in the kitchens, bathrooms, and bring it up to code for a rental property. I guess if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I do have, I don't know when it was converted. I know that was kind of a question. Based on some of the materials, I have some rough ideas. There's an addition on the back of the unit, so there's an original house that is significantly older than the rest of the property. The addition on the back was likely built in 1960, is the estimate that had been given by contractors, and that's because there's asbestos siding on the outside. And we don't expect that that would have been used after 19, much after the 1970s. Some of the units have their older utilities or older mechanicals, so some of the water heaters date back to 1982. So that's another reason why I think it may be, may have been a fourplex for quite a
Great. Any commissioners who have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, question for applicant and staff. So when you, just to help clarify, when you purchased it, was it empty or were there residents?
There was one tenant, and three of the units were empty.
And so the city has really no idea when this turned into a four. I mean, it seems unfair to the applicant that if he wasn't responsible for turning it in, because, I mean, originally, like, I was thinking, like, if you bought this property and then turned it into a fourplex and then, like, obviously, then that's like a whole nother thing. and then turned it into a fourplex and then, like, obviously, then that's like a whole nother thing. But to kind of possibly punish him for purchasing this property and the city doesn't know when this happened. But it also is weird because this does not fit in the neighborhood. Like, so that's tough. That's tough. If anybody can help out with that and my thoughts, then that would be great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have questions.
Yes.
Okay, on your drawings, only see one bathroom. Is there a bathroom in every room?
That's correct. There is one bathroom in each unit.
Okay, is there a kitchen in each unit?
There's a kitchen in each unit.
There are stoves in each unit. There are stoves?
There are stoves in each unit.
Okay. How many amp services go into this house?
Currently, there is one hundred amp.
Okay, so you've got four individual ones and you've got a one hundred amp service. That is not enough service for all that.
When I purchased the property, I had reached out to the city to look at splitting the units to be, right now, it's shared utilities, as noted in the report.
Right. I read the report, yeah, I read that. So that's why I'm asking what kind of service you have.
Yeah, my intent was, oh, sorry.
Since you only have a hundred amp service, that is not enough to run four stoves in that unit. So that seems like a fire hazard to me. So there's individual hot water tanks for each one?
There is.
Okay, they're like twenty gallon, thirty gallon things?
They're the large ones.
Oh, they're forties?
Yeah.
And you said something in your thing about turning them all electric. Is that true or not?
That is, that was my intent.
Okay, so right now, they're all on gas, correct?
Yep.
You know how big, you have one service line coming in, one gas line, probably three-quarter inch?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, that's still not big enough. I'm sure code's probably changed for that. So there's a problem there. Sewer, do you know how big a sewer line you have? Do you have a six inch or four inch?
Going out of the unit, it looks like it's a six inch.
It looks like a six inch? Because, I mean, the old cast irons look like six, but they're usually four. So, I mean, for four units, a four inch, even six inch, probably not up to code for enough sewer. So, see, we have several problems here with you trying to make this a fourplex. I have bought a house here in Independence that was like that. I end up having to, I didn't have to, but I did. I turned it back to a single-family home. My opinion is, I think you're probably better off to turn that back into a single-family home, either rent as one or sell as one. So that's my opinion because you don't have enough service there. And if you want to get more legal, I guarantee you're going to get in a lot of problems with trying to update it.
Okay.
So that's where I'm standing at.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. And we may bring you back up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion is closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff or discussion or entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I have one more question, probably. Staff, on the, on that steps going up the west side, is that driveway not on the other property?
To my knowledge, the driveway is on the other property. Let me see if I can go to the aerial here.
Well, I drove by and it looked like to me, the only way to access it, you have to go on the other person's property to get to that unit.
It's really hard to say. The houses are kind of close together out there. As you can see from the aerial, the house to the west might be really close to being on the property line.
Well, there's a driveway there. And that's why I'm saying, I mean, I don't know if the tenant, the owner knows that that, I mean, because it looks like to me to get to what looks like unit two or three, the upper one, it has to go down, right there, that car park there, that's a stairway going up, I guess. Or it might be a little bit. No, that's not, is that the one? Or is that the one on the east, the west side building? Yeah, that's the stairway that's going up and that's the driveway there to the other unit. So that's why it's kind of weird there's no way to get to this. I'll walk all the way around from that parking in the back that I see. So that's just another detail that I noticed when I drove by.
Do you want me to have the applicant come back up? Commissioner Nesbit, or?
No, I'm just making a point.
Okay.
I'm just making a point there.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion. You know, they did really well when you weren't here. They actually, everybody did motions.
Well, you go ahead.
Before you make a motion, I just, I hate these cases. Because I, I mean, we have them every once in a while where someone buys something. And it sounds like, I don't know, they're not told the information or they get it late or, you know, I hate it for everyone.
Well, but I'm hoping that when he bought it, that he did go inspect the house before he bought it and looked at it. So, I mean, he had a chance to look at it before he bought it. So he knew what he was buying, yes. He was going for a fourplex so he could get more rent. That's what he went for. But it's zoned residential. Yeah, but it's zoned residential. Somebody changed it on him, but that could have been done by anybody, who knows when. And they never did pull permits.
Which is not his fault.
Well, it's not his fault. It's not his fault, but that's something, when he bought that, he should already realize that it is zoned R four, I mean, residential then. So that's the thing, you can't put a fourplex in a residential, in my opinion. You can do, maybe duplexes, right?
No, this is single-family, so it's only one unit.
I mean, anywhere, I mean, anywhere in the city, if it's zoned R six, it's one unit only.
That's right.
Yeah, so that's, that's something they should have known when they bought it.
Yeah, I think the bigger picture for us is, you know, the overall picture that we're trying to create is to create a better independence and a more, a cleaner feel and look. And so this just unfortunately falls into one of those categories where it is R six and.
And that's what it is.
And that's what it is.
And that's what it accommodates.
Yeah.
And if Commissioner Nesbit was able to articulate it as he did, then the questions should have been asked prior to the purchase. And it is not incumbent upon this commission to accommodate and backdoor the process.
Yeah.
And with that point in mind, if there are no further comment.
Here it comes.
I'm sure Commissioner Nesbit is going to make this motion. Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
In the matter of case number twenty-two dash one-two-five dash zero-six, the rezoning at three sixteen West Sea Avenue from R six to R thirty be approved? With the, with the conditions as stated by staff, numbers one and two.
Thank you. Is there a second? Anybody?
I second.
Thank you, Virginia. We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Chairman McLean?
No. Case number twenty-two dash one-two-five dash zero-six has failed. Next case is twenty-two dash two hundred dash zero-five, one-three-three-seven South Nolan Road. Matt O'Neal seeks special use permit for a tunnel car wash.
Okay, this is case two-two, two hundred oh five, Quick Shine Car Wash. Applicant Mike O'Neal. From the vicinity map, you can see this is the existing, the existing car wash there at Aberdeen, or the northeast corner of Aberdeen and Nolan Road. It was a long, legal non-conforming car wash that lost its non-conformity due to lack of renewal for a business license for a period of time. So the surrounding zoning, you can see it's on this, on the Nolan Road corridor. So you've got the residential there behind, well-screened with the existing fence there and other C two uses to the north and the south, Leah's Hair Museum to the north and Napa across the street. And I believe that's a former McDonald's to the south. And of course, the single-family residential neighborhood there to the east. And the comprehensive plan goes right along with the zoning. It's in an area that's envisioned to be, continue to be commercial usage. And here's an aerial photo. So the applicant seeks approval of a special use permit for what had been a legal non-conforming tunnel car wash until August thirty-first, 2020, when the previous owner, Shane Devault, failed to renew his business license. Devault ran the squeaky-clean car wash from 2004 to 2021. The zero-point-two-eight acre property has operated a car wash at this location for approximately fifty years. The new owner has been manager there for thirteen years. No new construction or changes to the site is anticipated. So this request would just reauthorize the existing use that has been there for decades. The four thousand eighty square foot tunnel building is centered in the middle of the property. As you can see, customers can enter either in from Nolan Road or Aberdeen. And they enter through the back and come out the front. So real quickly, we'll go through the pictures here. This is looking north in front of the property. So you can see the sign right there that is Leah's Hair Museum. That's the business to the north. And this is directly to the northwest. And then across to the southwest. And this is looking south down Nolan Road. And this is looking at the exit at the front of the building where cars leave. And of course, this is the, where they queue up to go through a car wash entering through the back. And it's another view of the building from the rear where they enter in there. Rear of the building. And that's, okay. So staff recommends approval of this case with the following conditions. Number one, the municipal services environmental site inspection will be required as a part of the business license review. If any deficiencies are found, they will need to be addressed before the business license approval. And the second recommendation, all required licenses shall be maintained. And that concludes staff report. And I'm ready to take any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, staff?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
Brian, did you know when they added that parking area on the north side? I don't remember it always being there. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I don't.
I didn't look at the old aerials and, and I don't remember. I know I've worked for City about twenty years. I don't remember there being an addition during that time.
Okay, I was just curious. I don't, I just don't remember the vacuum being over there. I just, that's what bothered me.
Any other questions? All right, let's bring up the applicant and state your name and address, please.
My name is Shane Devault, eighty-five, forty-four, North Donley, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one five seven.
Anything you would like us to know or?
I'm the previous owner. I'm the reason we're here. I, somehow, my office failed to renew our license after sixteen years in a row. And we lost our grandfather status. And we are reapplying for a special use permit. I don't think there's much else that can go in that building. It's got a pit and it's got, it's pretty tight on there. We did start leasing about four years ago from the aisles. That's where the, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I remember it. Any other questions? Any questions at the applicant? Yeah, it kind of, things happen. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any questions of city staff? Any discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this case appears to be rather straightforward.
So would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that case two-two dash two-zero-zero dash zero-five, special use permit, one-three-three-seven South Nolan Road, be approved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, will that be with the conditions in the staff report?
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will take call for vote, please.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash two hundred dash zero-five has been passed. Welcome back. Okay, case twenty-two dash two hundred dash zero-six, special use permit. Gus Salman seeks approval of vehicle sales lot at two oh three North M two ninety-one Highway. Staff report, please.
Yes, Gus Salman seeks to open a used car lot there at two oh three North M two ninety, two ninety-one Highway. As you can see from the vicinity map, this is on the, would be the southeast corner of two ninety-one and Third Street. This location was a gas station originally, probably twenty-five years, thirty years ago. It's been a smoke shop and a little convenience store and even a little cafe here just recently. So we'll just go through these slides here. This is the zoning of the property. As you can see, it was zoned C two for probably forty years, who knows? There is a property to the immediately, immediately to the east that is zoned R twelve. This went through the planning commission about a year and a half ago. The applicant rezoned the property from, I believe, C one or something to R twelve. I think he's in the process of dividing the lot into two to build a duplex on each of the two lots. South of the site is a, was it a restaurant? I'm not sure if it's open right now or not. It appears to be closed. It was a restaurant before. Across the street to the north is what was another restaurant. This is the comprehensive plan actually shows of residential uses for this site and basically all the property along the east side of M two ninety-one Highway in this location. And this is the aerial of the site. It shows the building. It sits in the back center of the property. Probably had the gas pumps between there and the front property line. There's no tanks there now. There may have been a canopy there, I don't know. You can see the portion of the restaurant onto the south of there. The parking kind of intermingles there a little bit. And again, this is the last, most recent use of this small building was a cafe, a little diner type place. The applicant, he intends to use, it's about a twelve-hundred-and-sixty square foot building. It has about seventeen parking spaces in somewhat poor condition. Scattered about on the site on the east and, excuse me, on the west and north and south of the building. It has access to both two ninety-one and Third Street, Third Street on the north. He intends to paint at least part of the building and install a single-car garage. He intends to paint at least part of the building and install a single car garage in the front of the elevation, on the front elevation just south of the entry doors for the auto repair aspect of the business. The auto sales will be the primary. There will, indicates there will be some use of the property for auto repairs as well. As I said, it's about 65% of the business revenues will be from vehicle sales with a remainder in auto repair. Generally, the sale vehicles will be displayed along the front, which is on the west side. Parking row along 291 Highway, the customer parking will be adjacent to the building. As we go further along here, you can see that this is his site plan that he submitted. You can see it's somewhat of an odd shaped lot. The building faces somewhat to the southwest slightly. Got a number of parking spaces along the highway. Those will be the sale sites. I guess you'd call them sale parking spaces. And then he's got building, parking spaces on the north and south of the building and also in front of the building. This is pretty much the way it looks right now. He does plan on making some changes to the building where the window is there. It's probably where the garage door was for their, when it was a gas station previously or service station. Going to take that out and put a garage door in there so he can do repairs. He plans on putting some bushes and flowers around the front of the property. Some landscaping on the south property as well. And you can see from the illustration there is a garage door planned where that window is. Because that's the only, like the only non-stucco portion of the building. That makes me think that that's probably where the garage doors were, garage door was at one time. This is the building itself. Kind of dark in this photo, but it is kind of a greenish, not quite army green, but a small building. And it's all, as you can see, the pavement is in fair to poor condition in this photo and you can see in other parts of it as well. That, it's, that's actually a little trailer from what I can, from what I can tell being out there. I think it actually has some wheels on it. There's a tongue that comes out the, comes out the parking lot side of that little shed trailer type thing. Here we're looking north, 291 highways on the left. This is the south side of the building. There's a little landscaping there, I think that was put there when the diner was, when the place was converted to a diner a few years ago. This is the back of the structure. We're looking to the west, 291 highways, there's off the distance. There was a gravel road or something there behind the building that's in poor condition. There's nothing unusual about the back of the building. It's just concrete block from what I can tell. This is the restaurant that was immediately north of the site across Third Street. It's now vacant. It's been, it was vacant for, I mean, it was busy for a number of years, but about three years ago, I think. He had a fire in the premises and also COVID had, and it just didn't survive. This is the property that's immediately east of this location. This is the vacant field that was rezoned to R12. He's going to divide this in half and put a duplex on each of the two lots. That's a single family home. Pretty much everything east of, of that line there where the house is into the neighborhood is all single family. Again, this is the barbecue to, restaurant to the south. I'm pretty sure that it's closed now. Another casualty of COVID, I guess. As nearby 24 Highway, as the nearby 24 Highway corridor has an abundance of used car lots already in operation. Staff does not recommend approval of the additional, of an additional used car lot dealership for the site. However, if the planning commission did determine to recommend approval of this application, it should be done with the following conditions. Number one is no vehicle shall be displayed, stored, or parked in the right of way or along the gravel grass areas on both sides and in the rear of the building. Two, the parking lot should be resealed and restripped in accordance with city code standards. With at least one of the spaces being designated for van accessible ADA space with proper markings and signage. With at least three customer parking spaces provided. Landscaping must be provided in accordance with the city code standards. If a trash dumpster is to be placed on the site, a masonry enclosure must be constructed. All site improvements shall be completed prior to a city business license being approved for the vehicle sales business. The trailer shed currently in the, along the highway, used for signage must be removed and replaced with a sign in accordance with United Uniform Development Ordinance. Use of the trailer shed for a sign is not permitted by city code. The drive entrance width from Third Street shall be reduced to provide for better safety at this offset intersection. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the city before we call the applicant up?
Yes, Madam Chair. Staff, as you know, this commission has wrestled with, struggled with the proliferation of used car lots in the effort to make good sense and the best and highest use of property. We have not had guidance from on high and therefore we continue to struggle. This does not appear to be pretty, does it?
Is that a rhetorical question?
That's about as direct as I can be and be kind.
Yes, that's correct.
Are you back, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, a question here for Mr. Hey, when you guys say move the Third Street entrance, are you saying that they have to close it off more away from 291 or back towards that? According to his drawing, he's taking it more towards 291. Are you guys going the other way?
I'll let Mr. Redrow answer that question.
Should we go ahead and bring him up?
Well, I want to see what, I want to see what they say, which way that driveway is supposed to go.
The intent there was to shrink it away from 291.
That's what, that's what I thought you probably were trying to try and do. That way they have room to cars come out of there.
To actually make an actual turn at the intersection.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Okay. And will the applicant come up, please? And state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Gassan Al Salman. Address is 1329 Northeast 106 Place. Live in Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Tell us anything you would like us to know.
Used cars, bringing on vehicles is my passion. I want to bring a kind of a dealership to Independence that provides auto service and sales to the local area. In addition to that, I want to have vehicles that are internet priced within 500 miles of Independence, Missouri. So when you walk in on this car lot, you're, you're not, you get, you know, you're getting a fantastic deal regardless if you shop for a vehicle or not. Kind of a different mindset and a, and a different, just a thinking or thought process. But all the vehicles will be serviced and inspected and reconditioned before they're put on the lot. They'll be highway ready, you know, road ready before we sell them. So we plan to do a business, to set up a business in Independence that networks with other businesses. In other words, I'm going to locally source my items that I purchased. Let's say I'm putting some vehicles on my lot. I need brake pads or rotors, that kind of thing. I'm going to, I'm going to purchase them here locally, which is going to put money in the City of Independence coffers and keep revenue here local. So I plan to network with other businesses on getting, and sourcing these parts, the fluids, whatever it happens to be for, you know, customer comes in, wants antifreeze, wants this, wants that, whatever it is. I plan to get them locally. And so, you know, I plan to set up a business that is, you know, Independence friendly and will support the community here. And likewise, will give a fantastic opportunity to locals to be able to purchase and or get auto service at a competitive price. I'll open it up to questions, yeah.
What kind of auto repair are you thinking about doing?
So just simple things. We're not going to drop engines or transmissions. It's going to be more of like service, like brakes, rotors, changing fluids, that, that kind of, just automobile service. This location was previously a quickie shop, was previously, had a garage door on it like they had mentioned. In fact, the tracks for the garage door are still there and it's, it's ready to be a, a, a car sales slash service station again. And we're, we're more than happy to be the ones to do it if we have your graces.
And how many cars do you think about parking out front?
Not too many. I think we'll balance, we'll, we'll balance the business. We'll see what comes, what, you know, if we have more service, then we'll use more of the spaces for service customers. Maybe seven, maybe nine, maybe 10, maybe 15. Now, the lot there is easily upgradable and, by the way, I have this building under contract to purchase, so it's not, I'm not, it had said at the paperwork that I was a tenant. We're actually buying the building should, should we have your graces to do so. The, the lot is expandable and so we plan to, we'll tar it and we'll cover it and make it a nice parking lot again. It is not in the best shape, but it can be. And so they're, like they were showing the pictures and stuff, there's space behind the building. There's places on the side of the building. I don't want a junkyard. I don't want something that's not beautiful for the City of Independence. As you saw my landscaping diagram and that sort of thing, we want to put shrubbery and greenery and, and kind of make it look a lot, a better appearance than what it is now. And at the same, at the same time, by the same token, we don't want to collect a bunch of junk cars that look terrible for the City of Independence. Not our intent and not our plan.
Okay. Commissioners?
A question for you here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the driveway asphalt as it is, does it need to be completely resurfaced or just sealed?
I think just sealed. I mean, there's some cracks in there. Would be tar, seal, and probably just a, a, a re-tar surface, if you will. I don't know what they call that. Not necessarily re-asphalated, but re-blacktopped.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another question is the trash, where would you end up putting the trash at? Cause I know you're going to have to enclose it.
Yeah, so we may do, we may do it behind and we'll enclose a little bit like a cinder block wall or something around it. Will be with, definitely within the City of Independence guidelines and regulations on that.
Okay. I know cost wise, it's not going to be cheap for you to get back up and going. You're probably going to spend somewhere between 50 to 100,000, I think, to get this up and going.
Sure.
Plus the purchase price.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure you're not going to get started and
Yeah.
fail.
Yeah, no, funds, funds are available and I do own other businesses. I own a real estate office on the broker record for my office, 20 agents who work for me. And I own two new home construction companies, so.
Okay, so you, so you got a lot of businesses then. Okay, thank you.
Do you own any other used car lots?
I don't own any used car lots, but used cars is my passion. Pre-owned vehicles. Since I graduated college, I have sold cars and have been involved in vehicle sales. I've worked for Marcus Allen. Marcus Allen, Kansas City Chiefs, used to own a Toyota dealership. Worked for Randy Reed for several summers while I was going to college, just to pay my bills and just help out with expenses and that sort of thing. So Pontiac, Buick, GMC Truck. And I'm currently affiliated with another dealer whereby I have auction access. I can get vehicles and that sort of thing. So been doing it for years. Love it, enjoy it, and I want to bring a wonderful project to Independence.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay.
Madam Chair, I got one more question. So I, I know you're going to put a fence around, right? Is it?
No, not necessarily. We were not intending to put a fence up. I believe they were not allowing us to.
I thought that what that blue line was. That's why I thought it was a fence.
The, the blue lines are the, there's little dots. Those are access, there's an access directly off of 291 Highway. And there's an access directly off of Third Street. So we were thinking possibly to gate it off like during business hours when it's closed, but I, that's, that's not necessary.
No fence the rest of the way around?
No, not going to fence it the rest of the way around.
Well, we, we have let car dealerships put up little barriers.
Right, yeah, that's why.
But not too fencing.
Well, yeah, that's why I thought a barrier thing.
Perhaps a barrier or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure. But, okay. Now, you do understand that your dots for the Third Street, they want them moved back. That way, that's one of the stipulations.
Yeah, we, we can discuss those things. That's not an issue. Well, you know, you want to, did you want Third Street to access smaller or wider?
The entrance to be smaller.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can, we can definitely do that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you realize that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Is there anyone here would like to speak for this case? Approach and please give your name and your full address. Sure.
Okay.
I was going to let you flip a coin, but.
Okay. Thank you for your time. My name's James White, 107 North Broadway, Oak Grove, Missouri. I own the building just to the south. The, it's a restaurant right now and it's in a transition. It's going to be a Mexican restaurant. But if I could just give you 30 seconds or a minute to just kind of tell you a little bit about my background, I'd be grateful for your time. I was born in Independence. I went to William Southern, Bridger Junior High, Truman High School. And I did my student teaching at Bridger Junior High. I coached at William Christman. I did my aiding and some substitute teaching at Truman and my student teaching at Bridger. And I've invested in Independence, not only my life, but you know, my business. And so I just wanted to say that I'm grateful that this empty building is going to have a auto body and, or I mean, a service body, car lot and service. Because a lot of people come in there and then they'll go eat at the restaurant. And then also, there is, once they're there waiting, you know, they'll leave, they'll go up to the car wash that's getting ready to open on the corner. You know, they'll go after being there for a while, instead of going home, they'll eat there. And one of the things that I've noticed, a lot of the people that come, that are coming home are going to Gladstone and Liberty. And we get a lot of those people coming there and they're spending money in our town. And that, I really like that because the, there's so many people that are driving 291 to the north. And I think it's just really going to help. And so I think that it would be a really good thing and I just appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Same thing, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Gazidien. Good evening. My name is Gazidien. I am the owner of that building, the third building to them. The car to be and the restaurant and warehouse. I live on 924 Kentucky Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you.
But I use that warehouse as personal belonging and my, for my business online. But the family, my, my children, they are grown up. They have in mind to have a dealership like them in the future. So I don't mind for them to have that dealership. But before I say that, does this will make me lose the option in the future for having a dealership beside, in, in my warehouse? Or this will give me the option to have that? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Come on up. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Sandy Jordan and I live at 16418 East Third Terrace Court North.
I might have you, put the, put the microphone there.
Is that better?
Thank you.
I live around the corner from where this is proposed to be at. And having another used car lot in the area is just not, it doesn't seem to be a safe space. And then the longer that I sit and listen, the, having the garage door in the front and having, not a real plan for having, how many cars that will be there. And having the garage door take up three to four of those 17 spots, sounds a little iffy. The space there on the picture on East Third Street, having that whether or not it's smaller or larger, that's already a problem area. And having a used car lot for people coming out of there, there's only one. there's only one stop sign there on Third coming off of 291 headed north, then that's a problem spot. And so to have another facility such as this, and I'm sure that Mr. Salmon is a great businessman, the, for our neighborhood being so residential and having so many children there, this just doesn't seem to be a feasible avenue at this point for the residents that live in the neighborhood.
When you say problem corner, can you expand on that?
I can. If you can, I'm not sure if that picture will come down, but coming right off of the north end of that lot is onto Third. And right there, it's, when you come off 291, you kind of go around. And so you have the right-of-way coming from the east to the west off of Third, there's one stop sign there. And so it's very problematic already because you're kind of concerned and confused, especially if you're coming from the north to the south, turning onto East Third, then it's, who goes first? What happens here? Because there's no directive for that. And so it's not a stop sign in each direction. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And so the vehicles that come through there and then having a service lot as opposed to just a car lot, it sounds like that it kind of gets more into the service area. And then thinking about the environment with the fluids and those type of things, just doesn't sound right for our neighborhood at this point.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and respond to the issue?
I'm not sure about the stop sign issue, what she's, what she's saying. I'm more than willing to, I guess if the city wants to put in a stop sign or something, I assume any business that operates out of here is gonna have the same issue, regardless if it's a restaurant which it's zoned now or a quickie shop which was zoned previously. I don't know what it is that she's saying, but apparently one needs a stop sign on both sides or something like that. Regarding the service shop and bringing in traffic and that sort of thing, I don't, I mean, I don't, it's not a, it's not a huge lot. We're not having a huge traffic come through here. And as far as disposing of fluids and that sort of thing, we'll absolutely do it safely and do it environmentally friendly the way it's supposed to be done. So we operate our business by the books and we'll do it correctly.
I think part of maybe the concern, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but is maybe the ambiguity of, you know, how many cars you're thinking. It's anywhere from five to 17.
I have one shop, one bay. It's a small service shop. I mean, some of the ones that were on the video earlier had three and four and five bays. This is, we're just making one garage door. It's gonna service the vehicles that we have on the lot, and it's gonna, any customers that needs help or needs something changed or needs a break or whatever happens to be, more than happy to help them and be a team player and a customer-friendly business.
Right. And, but then you also did talk about expansion in the, the back area, correct? Because it was so big.
Should, should we need it? I mean, you know, I don't, I don't plan on filling the lot. And like I told you, I don't plan on a junk collection out there. That's not our intention and we won't, we won't get to that point. We're, we're gonna operate a nice, clean business and something that Independence wants to see, not something Independence does not want to see.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of the applicant or the?
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Or a statement, actually.
Sure.
I think I would be more comfortable if you were only servicing the vehicles that you have on your car lot, not open to the public for service.
I would be, I would be open to that, too, if you think that's a, if you want to do auto sales only. You know, this was previously a quickie shop that serviced vehicles like that. I, I didn't, I mean, the zoning on it was like that previously, and I just thought, well, sales and service kind of go together. But I'm not, I'm not objecting to that.
Sometimes when it's open to the public and you do a service for somebody and they can't pay for it, it, the car ends up sitting on the lot
Okay.
For a while. And sometimes they just don't look good sitting there.
Stuart told me the same thing. So, yeah, so, so if you, if you think that we would do auto sales only and perhaps service our own, that would be fantastic. I'm, I'm good with that likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one additional question before you go. Staff presents that the parking lot contains 17 spaces in poor condition. Tell me again the type of surface that's there and how you intend to remedy and make for a good presentation.
Oh, so the lot, we'll, we'll plan, we'll fill in all the, if you see just like little cracks and it looks like it'd been patched previously, a couple places had pulled
This is concrete or is it asphalt?
It's concrete and asphalt. It's a mix of both. It's a mix of both. So, you know, we'll, we'll fill in properly and level it out and then
You don't
I'd like to black top it all to make it look more
You don't intend to have a solid asphalt or solid concrete you're gonna patch?
Right now, it's a mix of both. I was gonna resurface the top and kind of go like a, a black top layer and repave the lines and that sort of thing to make it more presentable, make it look better. That with the landscaping and the other items that we were considering on that other sheet I turned in, I thought would make the property very presentable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Can close the public hearing? Any discussion amongst us or any other questions for the city? All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of case number 22-200-06, special use permit for a vehicle sales lot at 203 North in 291 Highway, I move for approval with the stipulations cited by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second? I second. Commissioner Wiley. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Sheriff McLean?
No. This one, I think was also a hard one. I feel for the restaurant, of course, going in because I know that it would generate traffic, but I think by the same token, I think the unknowns are, there's a lot of undowns. So I think a better business, tighter business plan would have been a much easier, palatable option. So, thank you for your time. Case number 22-200-06 has failed.
I apologize, Madam Chairman. I do not have a slideshow for the preliminary plat.
Thank you.
You do have the version that was submitted and discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, so our other business is 22310-01 preliminary plat of the Jackson Drive International Park, 2808 South Jackson Drive. And we have a packet in front of us that we can review. Do you all want to take a minute to look through it?
I can go over the update if you'd like, but
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, this is an application by Hallmark Construction to do preliminary plat to divide property at the, the corner, basically the corner of Jackson Drive and RD Miles Road. The site contains a little over 42 acres. The applicant seeks to divide it up into four lots with one track, the track being for Stormwater Detention Basin. The property is currently zoned C2 on the south and industrial on the north. From what I can tell, it's been that way since 1980. Currently, it's undeveloped. There were several issues that were raised at the last meeting on a number of topics. We went back through the tape, so to speak, and tried to lean those down into a number of, of issues to clarify. Question rose about the Jackson Drive being a boulevard. The city doesn't have such street classifications. When Jackson Drive was constructed in 2009, it was built to the major arterial standard with a four-lane divided road profile. And we have not had any discussions or aware of any discussions about making any significant improvement to the roadway. Another came, issue came up about the zoning of the property. We went back through old zoning books and found that it's been zoned industrial since at least May of 1980 when the city adopted the new zoning ordinance and the new zoning map that went with that. The design of the buildings and site, it's granted that the standard I-1 zoning doesn't allow, doesn't have the same site building and development standards of the BPPUD, but it does have setback parking, landscaping, and building design standards. And attached to your staff report was all the uses, the use table, the setback information, parking, landscaping, facade materials, design standards, lighting for, for just a standard I-1 zoning district. And then the last major issue seemed to be about the detention basin. Seems like there is a limited information on the existing basin north, on the north end of the site. It appears to have been constructed in conjunction with the Jackson Drive about 12 years ago. A full stormwater study will be required with the engineering plans. Agreement for the maintenance and ownership of the basin must be reviewed and approved by city and recorded with the final plat. From what we can tell, those were the issues that were brought up, and we hope we addressed them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have one gentleman that I have granted the option to speak tonight. So we will hear him and then we'll proceed. Mr. Williams, you're welcome to come up.
Thank you, Chair, Chairman McLean.
Could you put the microphone closer to your, sorry?
Yeah, put the microphone closer. And then I do just kind of want to remind you that we are only here to talk about the zoning, nothing else. So that's all we have any control over, and so that is what, all we can talk about.
About the subdividing of the property.
Yes.
I believe I remember, well, can I just read this? Because I know from the previous minutes, you indicated that you were going to, to do several things to validate the one that the, the detention basin works and that it also meets environmental safety. So I believe that I, I'll just, I'll just, okay. My name is Randy Williamson. My wife and family have lived at 2700 South Mohican in Independence for 36 years. My house is less than 50 yards from the proposed Jackson Drive Industrial Park. Will be developed. Basically, I live right in the middle of the detention period 50 yards to the west. My purpose for speaking tonight is to share with you my concerns regarding the Stormwater Detention Basin directly across the street, which was built in 2010, that is on the property where the Jackson Drive Industrial Park is planned. Based upon copies of public records I received from submitting multiple Sunshine requests, I have seen no evidence that planning or the execution of the building of the detention basin followed the best due diligence practices, the applicable codes, the required studies, and the required approvals to check and verify that the surface and groundwater table levels were not going to be impacted by digging the Stormwater Detention Basin. There is ample evidence the ground and the water table level was impacted, causing negative impact on the neighborhood, the neighboring streets, and many neighboring homes, causing foundation damage. This was directly caused, this has directly caused neighboring citizens to spend anywhere from $12,000 to $48,000 per house to repair the foundations, plus causing the property value to decline. Additional foundational repairs may also be required. The damage to the foundations of the houses happened shortly after the detention basin was built. There had been no foundation damage to these homes prior to the detention area, with many of the houses being built 24 to 27 years prior to the detention basin. Based upon the public records from the Sunshine requests, it indicates that the Stormwater Detention Basin was built by subcontractors hired by Hillburn Trucking Company, but the City of Independence reimbursed Hillburn Trucking Company for the expense of the building of the detention basin. Because of the above issues and the fact that the previous project minutes require compliance with environmental and health laws and regulations, and providing that the detention basis is working, is in working order and has adequate capacity, I am requesting that the Planning Commission does not proceed with considering approving the plat and halt the progress of the Jackson Drive Industrial Park project. This would be necessary for the City of Independence to take the time required to determine if the original building of the Stormwater Detention Basin met the best practices of due diligence and to ensure all city, county, and state regulations, including the NQR, to ensure that those permit requires, requirements and inspections and related activities were fulfilled. If it is found that this, I respectively request that if it's found that the steps and the requirements were not followed and completed during the initial building of the detention basin, then the City of Independence should take the appropriate action to correct these issues, to perform the required task, and to do the right thing to compensate the neighbors for the expenses, fix the streets, which by the way, I had a, two street service tickets that were closed without anyone telling me within two days of people coming out, and protect the tax-paying residents from further damage to their homes and property. This isn't the great American story that's written up there.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Okay, I have questions. Okay, we're talking about the detention basin on Track A, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The home's back up to it. You say have water damage due to water setting in their back, feeding into, pressuring into their homes. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I live on the other side of the, the Mohican. I live on the west side.
Okay.
And so I believe there's many more there on that side that have had the foundation problems.
Okay. Now, as to these street things, it's, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's going on. So you're saying that the city paid somebody else to make the basin, is that correct?
Yes.
And do we know anything about that, staff?
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I can't speak to the past as to how either it was built or who it was at this time.
Okay, that's fine. That's why I'll check on that. Okay, so then the other thing, what street issues did you have that got fixed or closed or?
Well, first of all, Mohican Avenue, when it was built, it was built by Robert Allen. He put 18 inches of concrete. That's what he put on, on that road. And then the city put two layers of asphalt on it. And the, what is happening between my property and the property to the north is the street is caving in, okay? It's also happening about two stories up. I believe it's right next to the gentleman that was sitting behind me. And so the, the street is caving in. If you've got 18 inches of concrete that has rebarb in it and it's sinking like that, then there's, there's problems.
Yes, there is a problem. So it's not like to me, we need to go out and look at this. It's not like we have a problem out there with the street issue.
I can give you
Maybe what he's talking about, the water detention, maybe it's not built correctly. I have no idea. I'm not no expert. So that's something we might have to look into.
May I interject?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And city. So, just so I'm on the same page. And I appreciate your time, but the recommendations and the things that he shared towards the end of his presentation is nothing to do with us as the Planning Commission. And these problems that he's listing that are already existing are, also have nothing to do with us. And it sounds like, I understand if somebody needs to go out there, but like
No, no, it
We're not going out there.
It has to do with us because we're looking at Track A. We're trying to say this is a good place for detention. And maybe it's not because it's already public that Track A, as they want to split it up. So that's what we
So then at the very least, if that's the case, then we
We need to, we need to have the detention checked out by somebody
With the city, not the
Yeah.
Planning Commission.
Right, the city needs to do that, but we shouldn't approve having Track A made yet until we make sure that it's okay detention. Detention might need to be going to Lot 5, we don't know. That's something that somebody who's an expert needs to check on. And I don't know who needs to pay for it, maybe the homeowner wants to do, not homeowner, the owner wants to do this. Maybe they need to look into, make sure it's up to standards of a detention base-
But again, this is really not in our purview-
My, my understanding is that-
Right.
That detention area was put there primarily to allow more industry to come in, because there was a detention area that needed to be there because of the water problem that we have.
Right, now, I understand where he's coming from, he's saying we shouldn't approve this yet until we make sure Track A is feasible for the detention area, because that's what, that's part of what we're approving is Track A. That's what he's saying. I mean, that's just, that's my, that's what I'm thinking, what he's talking about.
Counselor?
Would you like me to try to provide a little guidance?
Yes, please.
So, your decision with respect to a plat is more limited than it is when you're looking at a rezoning or a special use permit. It's a ministerial decision, and what you're looking at is, does the plat comply with all the requirements of the code that are required of a plat? However, you know, one of those requirements is that all the utility infrastructure, everything like that is complied with as part of the plat. So, yes, it is a ministerial duty where you're looking at, just does it comply with the codes? But having adequate, meeting the adequate infrastructure requirements of the code is one of the things that you can consider. So when you, when you look at, does it check the box? If there, if, if, if the plat presents an issue with respect to whether or not the, the utility infrastructure and other things like that are going to be adequate to serve the development, that is something you can consider, that is a check the box.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the remedy in our case here, Counselor? How do we approach this?
I would move that we make a motion that we postpone until we get answers.
So, so when you say remedy, are you asking how do we verify?
Forward for this point.
How do, I, I think, I don't, I'm looking at Rick to see if maybe there's, I mean, do we have information to provide to get them comfortable that they can check the box that the, the stormwater infrastructure is going to be adequate?
Well, when, when, with any of these developments, part of the requirement is stormwater mitigation. And that's going to be determined by the runoff of the site, that's going to be determined by the, I mean, there's all kinds of things. Curve number factors based on what they develop. That will then determine whether or not this site has the capacity to handle that. This detention pond currently actually serves the two subdivisions to the west and one of the subdivisions to the north. So, as one of the original conditions, obviously, this will have to be looked at. And this is part of that engineering design and approval part. I don't know if we can provide you any kind of like documentation to determine if whether or not this is the best location or whatever, usually that's determined by elevation and the site grading and how they're intending to actually distribute that stormwater. So I don't know if there's like, I, I don't feel that there's a remedy that we can come back to you and say, yes, this can or can't be, because it really depends on whether or not this is approved, and then that, that puts us into that next step of engineering design and submittal. So you kind of have to be into that next step in order for us to be able to determine, engineering wise, if this is going to work or not work. But part of the condition was to make sure that, yes, this pond is either going to be able to service this, does it need to be expanded, does it need to be, you know, clean, does this, does this need to be repaired in any way? But that's typically the next step.
So let me, let me tack on to that. So, remember, this is a preliminary plat you're looking at tonight. So, once this is approved, and I'm gonna look to Rick for a little bit more guidance here, but I think once this is approved, that's when the next level of analysis comes in. And I believe, Rick, between preliminary plat and final plat, additional submittals are required, correct?
Correct, yes, that's when the engineering gets approved and submitted and reviewed by staff, after the preliminary plat.
I would just like to-
I have listed Williams in my ear right now. I'm figuring, how do we address an existing and go forward at the same time, though? So we have an applicant chomping at the bits to be heard. So counsel advice, how do we go forward here?
Well, I, I don't think, I mean, if, if you want to try to get comfortable with the fact that the stormwater issues are going to be solved as you sit here tonight, I don't think you're going to get there. But if you are confident that staff is going to do their jobs and-
Staff will do their job.
And, and, and get the, and get the necessary information to analyze that between the preliminary plat stage and the final plat stage, then, I mean, my recommendation, if you, if you think that's what's going to happen, then you move forward with this tonight, and then when it comes back for final plat, you make sure that, that that analysis was done.
That sounds feasible to me. I mean, that's what, that's what needs to be done, that's what it sounds like by Rick, so that's what we need to do, so. That's, that's, that sounds feasible. Thank you, sir, for your information.
I, I will just say that, you know, I have another, I, I don't want to do this, I would like for us to work together, but there, there are legal actions that we can take as a group.
Well, I don't know if we need legal actions, because right now, we're just deciding this, and then our city and our engineers are going to check on that problem that might be over there, so we can get with the owner of the property and say, that, that's why we gotta go through this step to get to our next step. That's our legal, that's what we legally got to do.
Okay.
So thank you for your information.
I, I didn't understand between a preliminary and a-
Yeah, yeah, preliminary and final plat, so this is not final, this is just what they want to do, then we gotta let the engineering do their job, make sure everything's structural, everything good, and then we can move forward in the final plat, then we decide on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
And it's great to know that you're going to be as diligent in the future as you were tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. I know. We, this is an unusual situation, because we had a formal request, so this is not a formal request.
I live right behind that thing.
Okay.
And it's, and it's right now, it used to be-
I understand, sir, sir.
Okay.
Sir, hang on, just let me think for a minute. I think that the consensus is, in this situation, we don't have a public hearing. He did, Randy Williams did write in writing, he had a formal request to speak, so we entertained it.
Why is all the money said I-
Here's the thing, sir, I feel like you're going to address the same issue, and I feel like we did hear it. We will obviously give it back to the city to do their due diligence, and hopefully in the next couple steps, it will be taken care of. But then you'll also have another chance. So I feel like that's a better format when it's in a public situation, is that a good solution?
It is.
Okay. So you will get heard, it's just that, in this format, it just doesn't feel appropriate, because not everybody's been allowed to give ample thought.
This goes on to the city council, so anybody can sign up to speak at that meeting?
Yes, it does go on to city council.
So is that the time that I need to reenter the plat and trust that?
You can sign up to speak at the city council, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay. So, we'll take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve Case 22310-01, preliminary plat for Jackson Drive Industrial Park, with the recommendations of staff, with also, I don't, no, we shouldn't have to do anything, that should be it.
Right. Is there a second?
I second.
I second.
Commissioner Nesbit, Commissioner Wiley. All right, we are ready for a vote, Stuart.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner?
There'll be a yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, and we do appreciate your due diligence, but I think the next steps are in their hands, and then, of course, you get a chance to go to counsel. Okay. Roundtable, anybody have anything of-
Madam Chair, I have some issues I need to talk about.
Okay.
Probably with staff. Staff, when we got approval for the Cargo Largo area, there was a traffic study done, do you guys know about that? Okay. Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, there was a traffic study done, I mean, we're getting a lot of concerns about the truck traffic. When I looked at the traffic study, it says it's going to increase 200% truck traffic, but they have no number of what to start with. Is it one truck, two trucks, 10 trucks, 15 trucks? Nobody knows. So our, our best traffic study is not any good, I see. Plus, why did nobody ever do anything about 35th Street and Nolan when the trucks were leaving Cargo Largo or leaving Unilever, fix the intersection so that a truck can turn back onto Nolan Road without running over the curbs? Or swinging out into another lane on 35th Street to go? Where there's a lot of problems going on right there.
I know that there is consideration for the turning radiuses, but in regards to the actual study, honestly, I'd have to go back and take a look at it, it's been quite some time to see what it actually showed.
Well, I don't know if I gotta make a formal request or make a motion that the, we get something done about, it's basically the turning radius on 35th Street, I mean, we got a problem there. There eventually, somebody's going to take out the light pole. I know the light pole and a fire hydrant are really close right there at that corner on, I want to say, the southwest corner.
So, I don't, I'd have to check and see the status of the construction of the site, but that corner, that light pole is going to be moving, and I know that that area is supposed to be widened. And so there is supposed to be a widened turning radius as you go onto that roadway. But, like I said, it, it's been a while, I have to go back and take a look at it.
The street commission, the street people knew nothing about anything being happened. So I don't know why they didn't know anything about it, because I've questioned them on that, too. So we need to get together with them, so they know that something's happening, because we got a lot of people upset about, because our truck traffic's probably going to increase 100 times there. And there are going to be a lot of problems. And plus, we also got to know that the trucks cannot be turning onto 32nd Street, the one right in front of the high school. And are we doing anything about crosswalks, because we do have kids crossing there when school gets out?
So I know that there's sidewalk improvements throughout as well. Probably the best thing is, we'll go back and I can provide you guys the-
Well, you need to probably provide the street commission, Zane and all them submit update, because they know nothing about this.
Okay.
And since they got to oversee it, correct?
We're the one, actually, Community Development does the construction inspection on the site.
Okay.
So, I don't know what their role is at this point.
Well, they knew nothing about, so that's probably why I need to bring it up here, so I can see what's going on, so.
Okay.
That's one question there I had.
Yeah, and it could just be, too, that they haven't done that part yet.
They haven't, I mean, they're building the building, so I didn't know how far along.
Yeah, and, and remember, too, that there is a development agreement on that, and the part of that agreement is to make sure that their buildings are substantially complete before they actually do the roadway, because one of the problems that we didn't want to have was that they started constructing the roadway. Now, they do have to have a certain portion of it completed for fire safety purposes during construction, but we didn't want them to have a lot of fresh asphalt out there while it was still being constructed. So it's actually part of the end phase of the development agreement that the buildings are substantially complete before they start doing that part of the public infrastructure.
Rick, you answered a lot of questions right there.
And maybe that, maybe that was the-
I'm glad you knew what was going on, because nobody else knew.
So maybe that was part of the issue, and so I know they're doing sanitary sewer right now. Typically, they'll, they'll work on sewer, then they'll start doing the water lines. I think they have actually started doing some of the water, and then they'll start working on the storm. But then they're, like I said, they're supposed to have the building substantially complete before we start doing the roads.
Okay, well, Lisa, Lisa, I got an answer to tell people now, so, I appreciate it. My next question is going to be then to you guys, on the apartments down there on, I don't know what street it is, I know there's a Sonic down there, and I'm thinking it's this Ainsley Apartments, is that correct? Why is there no brick, stucco, rock on the fronts? Why is it all just lapboard? I mean, I mean, that is something that should be, I thought that's one of our standards or something, that it's supposed to have stuff at least on the first floor or something, to make it look better. Because if you look at all the other new places around there, they all have that, and I'm trying to figure out, how did this one get by without not having any of that?
I would say we probably have to go back and look at what was approved.
Could we, could I have you guys go do that, so we can get an answer? Because I've had people ask me about that, and I'm going, I have no idea, I wasn't here when it was presented, but I'm sure our standards are supposed to have brick, because I remember having one like that, that we had a problem like that. So that's why I want to make sure if something's, did we miss something, or do we need to go back on? I mean, I guess we already issued permits and stuff like that, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look and see what was approved with that one.
Okay.
And I, like I said, I, I don't think any of us recall at this moment.
I mean, I don't know how long ago it was approved, so I'd say, I don't know.
I'm, I'm a little jealous if people are coming up to Butch and asking him stuff about planning commission stuff. Nobody asked me and the general public as I'm walking around.
This seems like city council business.
It does.
I mean, this doesn't, this doesn't seem, these, these things were approved by a different planning manager.
Right.
Well, I understand, but-
This is city council business now. So I think if you've got questions, that maybe you should ask the city council, right?
No, I'm asking the planning commission, they're the ones supposed to oversee all this stuff, that's why I was asking them.
And then if it's the city council-
Well, but it's, it's putting them on the spot, because they, you know, they don't know.
Well, he did know, Rick knew the law. That's, I'm glad he answered all that, because I, I mean, a lot of that came from the street commission and citizens that are meeting tonight about questions like that, and I wasn't able to go to it. So that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that if you want to make a request, they could give us an update and report, and that would be fair.
Well, Rick, Rick answered one question, maybe on the other one, we need to figure out what happened there, because I drove by, because I go down there to go eat, and I'm thinking, well, how come that doesn't have that brick or stucco one outside? And I'm going, whoa, what happened there?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that's, I, I, city stuff, too, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like that's, you know, once we pass it, or previous, or whoever did it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
One thing we learned during COVID was virtual meetings, and there are those of us that have travel schedules that take us out of town for extended periods. I'm wondering, what do we need to do to accommodate those of us who will travel, who would still like to remain engaged? Can we do the blended combination, in person and virtual?
I mean, I guess you're watching all City 7, right, at the same time, but how can you get their vote? That's a good question.
We did it with Karen, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I, is it, it's up to each commission to kind of decide, is that right? Or are we a little bit, are we in a different category?
Honestly, I'd have to go back and look at our policy, updated policy for, for the virtual meetings at this point.
What if we had a special situation where someone is traveling, like Bill said?
I know that council has done that, and, and so my assumption would be that it's probably allowed, but we'd have to check and make sure that-
The capacity is there, so that's-
The capacity is certainly there.
Yeah, so maybe it's not for public, but it is for a commissioner, too.
Yeah. We would just have to check and make sure how we advertise that.
Okay.
And just make sure that we're, we're doing it right.
We're not advertising it for public use, we're, we're doing it for a commissioner.
For just a commissioner, okay.
Yeah, I think from a legal standpoint, you're okay, because you're still holding the meeting here, you're posting the meeting for here. I think it's just a policy and technology issue. Uh, I think it's just a policy and technology issue, really.
And the technology is there, it's a, it's a matter of doing technology.
So your inquiries just for commissioners to be able to, okay?
Yes. To make sure that we're all heard and have a voice and are as present as possible.
That's my two bit on the roundtable.
So-
Uh, at the last meeting, Commissioner Young requested more information on developments that are on the east portion of the city.
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, I think specifically he talked about the Little Blue Valley area. We put this, uh, this brochure together for your information. We do have it on, uh, on a slide that we can go through the cases if you'd like, or you can just look in here and get the information.
Would you guys like to see the slide, or do you want to do?
Just look at it later, whatever you would prefer.
Okay. I think we feel confident looking at it ourselves.
I appreciate you putting it together.
Okay.
This is great.
It's great, sir.
It's really good, yeah.
I, I would have a question about it though, so with numbers one through, looks like sixteen, like, without driving around all the spots, like, how, like, what phase of development are most of these in? Because some of them are very recent, so I doubt that there's any construction at all, but-
Uh, yeah, it is expand, it, it extends from, uh, Regency High Tenth Plat, which was approved probably fifteen years ago, maybe, they're just now, actually, she's gonna strike down the streets.
Yeah.
And then there's B Acres that was approved by council in the last month or so.
Right.
And they haven't been out to the site to even start surveying. And it's everything in between, the Ainsley Apartments are nearly finished. They haven't started work on the coffee shop yet, it's my knowledge.
Now what, they're digging five Menards?
Uh, yeah, digging in front of Menards, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So it, it really ranges the gamut, generally, everything's been approved and is incomplete or in construction or, uh, newly complete, I'll say that.
Sir, where's the, I'm sure you mean the paint floor, where's that at?
Well, if you're familiar, familiar with Sonic there on thirty, on, uh, Little Blue, on Jackson Drive, as it comes down, it's gonna be right beside the Sonic.
Oh, that's what's going there, they, they've started working on that one too, they haven't they yet?
Yeah, there's one up, just like it up on Berry Road in Kansas City North.
Are they gonna close the one on Twenty-four then?
I couldn't answer that question.
Thank you very much for putting it together though, thank you.
Yeah, this is great. I took a peek, okay, it is seven fifty-three, and this meeting is over.